I'd like to call the regular session of the Board of Education meeting to order, June 12, 2018 at 6:01 PM. I ask everybody to put their hands up.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You made me say this, thank you. This meeting is a, uh, I'm gonna have, let's do the roll call first and then I need to read that. Madam Secretary, please.
Steve Mitchell.
Mr. Taylor.
President.
Margaret Gads.
President.
Ms. McGowan. Um, Romany, yes. President. Ms. Scully. And Ms. Seetz.
President. Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have a forum. Next item on the agenda, item C, is approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
All right, Madam President, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written for tonight's meeting.
I have a motion. I'm entertaining a support.
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gads?
Yes.
Romany?
Yes.
Ms. Seetz?
Yes.
And Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. I will give you an opportunity to look at the June 5th closed session meeting minutes before we approve all of the minutes. And then after that, after the approval, we will collect those meeting minutes. Okay, we've all had an opportunity to read the meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion for regular meeting for May 8, 2018, special session. May 17, 2017, special session. May 30, 2018, work session. June 5, 2018, closed session. June 5, 2018, and special session, June 7, 2018. I'll entertain a motion at this time. I have a motion. May I get a support?
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Gads?
Yes.
Romany?
Yes.
Ms. Seetz?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. At this time, item E on the agenda is public comment. And this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school districts business and not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for the public participation, which is now during this meeting, as indicated in agenda item E. Pursuant to Board Policy 0167.3-G2, Board President or Presiding Officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Board Policy 0167.3-G2 also provides that the Board President or Presiding or Officer may request any individual to leave the meeting when that person behaves in a manner that is disruptive of the orderly conduct of the meeting. So at this time, we will open public comment session. And if you will come to the table and have a seat, please, we will give you three minutes. And please give us your name and your address and the total, uh, time for public comments is thirty minutes. Thank you.
My name is Lou Anne Damar. I am the Unit Director for the Michigan Education Association, representing Benton Harbor Teachers and parent professionals with the 501 Sixth Calmers Street in South Bay, Michigan. I'm here tonight to advise everyone who cares about kids, who cares about quality public education, who cares about this community, to please come to the next Benton Harbor Community Forum, which will be held on Thursday, June 21st, at the Benton Harbor Public Library, from 6 to 8 PM. Can be on it later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell.
Good evening, you guys.
Good evening.
My name is Amisha Berry. I'm from Marion County. Um, well, we had heard that you guys were on the side to keep the school open, the little language program, which I appreciate. Um, they had said something about we need a letter, or it was kind of a letter to let everybody know the school is gonna be staying open.
So, um, given some, um, direction that I was given from some of the leaders of the district, yes, you all should have received the letter yesterday telling you that the, um, there was gonna be some fresh ideas kind of put into that, to that program. And, um, we're, we're trying our best to do what we can to keep the students, um, together and doing what we can for the students. So you should have received the letter.
Okay. And also, will Mr. BS still be the principal?
And that is still in consideration. So, um, it is not off the table that he will not be, and it's not on the table that he will be. So that is still a consideration, depending on the number of students that are in that program, and also depending on the direction that we, when we come up with the program, on what that program will look like and what leadership will look like in that program.
Okay. And I also have one to say, and I was here yesterday and I didn't get a chance to speak because of some other people. And I don't wanna bash at you guys, because I know, I don't know who meant wrong, who meant what anything is wrong. But I just know that, I just really wish that, I have young kids that I'm raising up. They are shy at elementary school. And I don't plan on taking them out to Benton Harbor District because I'm tired. And I support, when I walk down these hallways, I don't see just kids running around. I treat like I see my own. When I look at my house, I see Donald Shucks, all type of things. And when I walk through these same hallways, I see the same thing. I show love to all children. And I'm just praying for everybody that we all get this together, because if, if, if it collapses, a lot of stuff is gonna happen. There's gonna be more kids on the street, because a lot of kids get suspended, and the smaller schools, they don't take a lot of kids that have got suspended. And it's gonna lead to more gang violence and just more crime, and we are already suffering as a community. But as parents, we gotta come together too. We get our kids together, and that could mean Jack and they bust up. But I think, thank y'all so much, and I hope you guys do good the rest of the day.
Thank you.
How everybody doing? I'm Pussy Socks in the 2018 Benton Harbor Year, and the State of Michigan 2018 Year Year. And I'm just gonna come and defend the kids that's younger than you, because I am a student here, and what I'm actually seeing actually. And, um, I just think it's, it's kind of unfair that we come to school every year and we engage in a learning environment that kind of gets toxic with the administration above us. And I don't think it's fair that these kids potentially see a chance that the schools in front of them may be shut down. Not at all, not a chance. Well, I just think that maybe you might hope that goes into these kids, and these kids struggle every day. I work in the Pussy First Club, and I have personal relationship with these upcoming kids. And I see the struggles they go through in school and outside, and that's just that he wants to say, we already have our personal problems as a community. And I think we should just work harder to make a better and safer environment for them in the schools. And I think it takes everybody in every position to make that happen, including kids themselves that way they conduct themselves at school. So I wouldn't say thank you for y'all, and let us have these meetings and speak out to you guys, but I just feel like it's getting a little risky, and I don't think it's fair for these kids to, well, even myself coming up seeing these issues every year. And now it seems like it's getting worse and worse, and I don't care. I mean, I'm a senior, I'm at the end of my road. I can kind of figure things out, but I don't think it's fair for these kids who's coming up in these circumstances, let alone the problems they are in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pussy, can you tell everybody who worked in, um, your experience with the Boys and Men Club and what you achieved this year?
Oh, yeah, I'm saying, being a Pussy Socks in the 2018 Benton Harbor Year, and I'm also the 2018 State of Michigan Year Year. And, um, I work in the drum room over in 608 Wells Club, and I also affiliate a lot over at the team center. So I'm in between both locations, so I have strong relationships with my peers and also with the younger kids of the community all over the city. And even around the community, not even just Benton Harbor, I have strong relationships with all, everybody around town.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Anyone else in the audience would like to come to the table at this time? If not, next item on the agenda, item two, uh, Business and Finance. We have staff report number one, which we had at our last workshop. And we have staff report number two, and Harvard High School TV studio camera copy machine proposal, staff report number three, and the Sedexo contract renewal is staff report number four. I would entertain a motion to accept staff report one through four, which we went through at the workshop.
The only one I don't think we discussed is the Sedexo contract.
Okay.
Would you want to move on to three?
Yes, please. If we could take, um, motion for items one, staff report one through three this time.
Madam President, I make a motion for the approval of staff report one, two, and three.
Thank you. I have a motion. May I have a support?
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Is there any questions at this time or concerns for staff report one through three? None? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Gads?
Yes.
Mrs. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Romany?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Ms. Seetz?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please, Mr. Lindsey, please.
So, uh, your current contract with Sedexo is a four-year, actually a five-year rolling contract. This is the last year of the contract. The state requires that at least every five years, the contract gets rebid. So next year, when you sit here, you'll be going through the bidding process for Sedexo. So in between, there are renewals. The state requires the Board to take action on renewals. Requires the, uh, Food Service Management Company to provide some information to you as far as what's going on with pricing. And, uh, in the, in the documents that are attached to the staff report, the, uh, the per unit, or per meal, meal price goes from seventeen point two nine cents to seventeen point six eight percent, or six eight cents. So a very small percentage increase, which is in line with what was probably in their original bid. Um, so we've already had the contract language sent to the state of Michigan for their approval. That's attached. It's contingent upon our budget adoption at the end of the month. Uh, but the staff report, so the Board's action time, uh, reason for the consideration is that the contract with Sedexo Magic will expire at the end of this year. Policy references eighty-five hundred for food services. The district spent the requirements specified by the Michigan Department of Education and secured the required approvals and documentation to proceed with a one-year renewal of the food service contract with Sedexo Magic. I've attached the contract renewal and MDE formal modification four-year review. So the recommended action is that the Benton Harbor Board of Education vote to approve the renewal and authorize the superintendent to sign this one-year renewal of the Sedexo Magic food contract, uh, with service actually should be through 6/30/19 with the rates specified by, uh, the renewal agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey. We've heard from, uh, CFO on the staff report. I will entertain a motion at this time to accept staff report number four.
I move to accept staff report number four.
I have a motion. May I get a support?
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Are there any questions at this time for Mr. Lindsey for staff report number four? If none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. McGowan?
Yes.
Mrs. Romany?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Ms. Seetz?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion carries. Um, is there any other questions at this time or before we go on to item three for our financial, business and financial department? Yes. Ms. Gads?
I was wondering if you would be able to update us a little bit on, um, the title money, um, that we had some issues about, uh, in terms of, um, what we are going to have to return or not return, how that, how that's.
So, so we, we have nothing, no money to return. The issue is that of our allocation that we received this year, we are not going to spend all. The state will allow us to carry a little fifteen percent of that, so that's a good-sized chunk of change for next year. Um, but due to, uh, quite frankly, staffing not being able to have certified teachers, a good portion of the grant was paying for a portion of their time, and the, the lack of our ability to spend all the supply money, um, we are not gonna be able to use that full allocation, which quite frankly has been the, been the story of the last couple of years as I look back. So with, uh, increased vigor in a planning meeting that's gonna be taking place, I believe, on the 26th, then again with the Department of Education out on the 18th and 19th of July, it's pretty long that lasts, uh, we're gonna sit down and create the budget that will be able to be fully utilized. And hopefully that will mean some changes, um, that we'll see some changes in classrooms too. Um, maybe, we don't know yet exactly how that'll shake up, but we're hoping that it's gonna provide some pair of pros and some other things that maybe we've not had the ability to do or just haven't taken advantage of in the past. So, uh, more to come as we work our way through mid to July.
Excellent. Thank you. I have one last question. Um, could you also give us an update, uh, on the safety grant?
So the safety, I was just putting together information to date for June, uh, before it came to the meeting. Safety Grant has had expenditures that will be more than half a million dollars in the current fiscal year. A big chunk of that is the contracted services that are provided by Riverwood, we heard from them, uh, at the last meeting. And the phone system, which was part of the capital outlay, uh, which will be installed over the next few weeks, uh, is also part of that. There's a two-hundred-five, two-hundred-six thousand dollar total expenditure. So we will still have, at the end of the year, we'll still have one million and three left in that grant to be spent between now and September of, uh, the next, in the next school year. So, uh, a lot of planning that can be done there. Hopefully we'll be able to get, uh, indeed, or help us redirect some of those funds to do some other things with, in combination with our sinking fund monies that we're, that we have. And hopefully we can just pool together and get a plan to do, get some things going as far as capital outlay and securing our facilities.
So capital outlay to secure our facilities, which geared for, even though the money was there, we, we had kind of planning, is that what you're saying? To be able to spend those.
Yeah, there was an allocation of eight hundred grand, it just has not been, I think we guys, as I read back to you in a minute, she talked about a lot of things, cameras, early detector replacements, all kinds of things, but just at this point, uh, it has not been planned. And, uh, now I, I believe you're ready to get that plan together and start next week.
One last piece of that question. You were saying you have some ideas. Um, I don't wanna put anybody on the spot, but between you and Mr. Robinson, are there a couple of ideas that kind of are at the top of the list of where you would like the money spent if we, if we get this plan together? And if this is too early, please say so.
Too early. However, there are a couple pieces that I would like to pull into that from. So we have the, um, CSM group priorities that we shared on our, with the Board, which prioritize some of the things that we do to, to work on key, uh, changing of the cheese and, or the lots, uh, we talked about cameras. So some of those things are some of the things that we talked about.
Also, another item in the title area, both Title One and Title Two, um, we'd love to be able to free up some dollars for recruitment and retention, uh, of teachers. And I got a, actually got an email from Andrea, from, not from Andrea Nessel, but from Shelby this afternoon, or this morning, with an example of some warning from another, from another district who's in similar situation to you guys that was approved by MDE. So we, we wanna try and build those components instead of not spending our full allocation. We wanna build those components and get them funded, because once you spend all your money, it bodes better for you in the next year in the allocation piece too, so.
So any other personnel, um, who might be funded under this grant?
Well, we've talked about, uh, different, different ideas, especially around Title One and Title Two. Nothing is in, in place yet. Um, but I do have plans next week, on Wednesday and Thursday next week, meeting with building administrators. And they're gonna really drive the school improvement plan, which is where the way it's just, because the money is to be used in the building. So depending on what the CNA or comprehensive needs and assessment data show, they'll determine what activities, what strategies need to be placed in their buildings and how they fund it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes, Mr. Lindsey. It was my understanding that, that the CSM group was, was, uh, hired and was working on the, the security of entryways to our buildings, and this is something that was supposed to take place as soon as school, school was out. So where are we with that? Still planning? This has been a few months.
Well, the actual report came back from them about three weeks ago, but, uh, yeah, that's, I think that needs to be part of the comprehensive capital improvement plan that the district undertakes together. Um, and I think, pending outcomes of conversations that'll happen later this week, I think there's a great opportunity to pool funds together to get some projects done, and some things that could probably take place relatively quickly, so people could see them, just some visual evidence that something's happening, and other things related to construction, depending on what we do, we have architectural drawings, the state, the fire marshal will be involved, and other things, that will take a little bit longer bit of time. Maybe some of that work could be done over Christmas breaks. I, I think there's a lot of things to happen there, but yeah, we, we have lots of planning to do. Quite frankly, right now, all I'm trying to plan is to try and get your budget for you together. And then I'd like to, I think that's the next, I see that as a huge priority for you guys. You have funds available, gotta get things in motion, and starting in motion and then in getting it to fruition takes, will take a bit of time, depending on how much, how extensive, like a security way, depending on what we do there. Um, and I think, uh, some people did some, some touring, did some security ways in another school system just this last week, so I think there's a lot of ideas out there. Um, as soon as we get past the budget adoption at the end of the month, I think that's the really next thing that should be done.
Any more questions for Mr. Lindsey? If none, thank you, uh, Mr. Lindsey. Item three on the agenda, human resources. Ms. Robinson?
Staff report number five, employment of instructional staff. Taking the Board consideration, the Board must vote to approve the employment of the instructional staff in accordance with the revised school code and other general laws of Michigan. Accident analysis of Russell Blard, PE teacher, Benton Harbor High School. Recommended actions that the Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education votes to approve the employment of the aforementioned instructional staff.
Thank you. We have staff report number five, read, uh, for our hearing from Ms. Robinson. I will entertain a motion at this time to accept the report.
So.
I'll support.
I have a motion and a support. Thank you. Any questions? Yes. Question, Madam.
This person also certified to teach in other classes?
I'll have to go back through and check to say for sure, to check the report that we gave them last week from, from the practice. It does not show whether or not this person is qualified to teach health or certified to teach health, but I will get that information from. I'll get that information from the staff report.
Question? Uh, yes, Mr. Mitchell?
Ms. Robinson, do we offer help?
We offer.
Here at high school?
Here at high school. Um, the current, um, health teacher does teach, uh, semester of health and a semester of.
Any more questions for Ms. Robinson? Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Romany?
Yes.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Ms. Seetz?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gads?
Yes.
And Ms. McGowan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, staff report number six, resignation.
Staff report number six, resignation of instructional and interventionist staff. Um, reason for Board consideration, the Board must vote to accept the resignations of the instructional and interventionist staff. Accident analysis, Benton Harbor Teacher Hall, effective six, twelve, twenty eighteen, within Harbor Area Schools for one year, exit interview completed. Behavior interventionist at Hall, effective six, twelve, twenty eighteen, within Harbor Area Schools for two years, exit interview completed. Retired GSRP teacher at DEC, effective five, twenty-nine, eighteen, within Harbor Area Schools for thirty-seven years, exit interview completed. Retired special education teacher at DEC, effective six, twelve, twenty eighteen, within Harbor Area Schools for thirty years, exit interview to be scheduled. Recommended action of the Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education votes to accept the resignation slash retirement of the aforementioned staff members, and that a letter is sent thanking them for their service to the students and the district of the Benton Harbor Area Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. You have staff report number six, read for your consideration. I would entertain a motion at this time for it. I have a motion, and I need to say.
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any questions or comments at this time? Trustee Romany?
I know we've not, because of privacy reasons, we have not put names on these staff reports, but I'd like for us to get that information as to who. I'm gonna look for eventually somebody unretired and one of us really then.
And, um, I do plan on inviting the two retired people to the Board meeting in July to, so that we can just kind of congratulate them openly for their service.
That's how we'll be all traveling.
I know, they're, they're already off, you know, I know they can't, except put it on the school grounds for thirty days. Thank you, Lou, for all of that information, but yeah, next month, we'll, we'll see.
Hey, thank you. No other questions or comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Scully?
Yes.
Ms. Seetz?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gads?
Yes.
Ms. McGowan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Momini?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item four is central administration. Ms. Robinson, staff report number seven. And we read that for your consideration last week. I will entertain a motion at this time to accept staff report number seven. I have a motion. I have, I need a support. I have a motion and a support. Any questions at this time of staff report number seven? Ms. Momini.
Yeah, we requested last week that we had information on what this teacher was going to be doing and what their job would look like, what their daily schedule and stuff would be like. I missed that somewhere?
No, it's under, if you look over, it says from a schedule.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. No other questions? Yes, trustee Tan.
So last week, we also discussed ways to, instead of having a teacher do this, you can have someone, right? You pay them less, and you also hire students to read to the other students in the park, right? We don't just necessarily need a teacher to organize books, read to a child. So have we looked at that option that we talked about last week?
Correct. And then, so what I did, I kept it as a teacher, so I didn't need to appear pro. But I do have enough money remaining to hire a student worker. So it will be a student worker and a teacher working together.
On this schedule, Mr. Taylor, she's got $3,200 for students.
Right, but I was looking to spread it out to more students. Because.
Yeah, so the person is entitled. Yes, I think we definitely have more students and a pair of.
Yeah, because if you think about it, any of us grownups can read a book to a kid in the park. So you don't necessarily have to be a teacher because, it's because you're a teacher don't make you give that reading to students. That's just factual, right? So I think that if we have this opportunity, we can get more innovative. But it's, I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm not disrespecting teachers. I'm saying that anyone can read to a child, right? And so I think we get the opportunities for young people to do that. We just had a young man come up here, right? And talk about students. So how do we engage our students? You know, we want them to be, have etiquette. We want them to be able to speak. And so give them that opportunity to do the same to a younger person that they're serving lunch to or breakfast or snacks, whatever that may be in the park.
Any more questions or who the CSMs can be?
I see the flyer that's attached to the. Meetup, a meetup flyer. Was this posted, it's a very good flyer, a lot of information, but wasn't posted in the AI terribly. I think that's a requirement.
No, it isn't because we need for the state's organization. They also need to.
Can't hear you.
Right now, you don't have a culture because we need for the state's finalization application of the. Change. But it's late to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, please.
Any more questions? Hey, thank you, madam secretary. Please call the room.
Ms. Gass?
Yes.
Ms. McGowan?
Yes.
Mrs. Momini?
Yes.
Ms. Gully?
Yes.
Ms. Seetz?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you, motion carries. Hey, next item on the agenda is item five for business, the Neola policy five, 11th update. I believe we did the staff report number eight at the workshop.
You gave them the policy.
You gave us the policy. Okay. Okay, so if you would read the staff report. Mr. Taylor, you read staff report number one for our consideration, please.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, staff report number eight. For the Benton Harbor Area School Board of Education to review and update Neola policies throughout the year as needed. Fact analysis, Neola policy five, one, one, one. Eligibility of non, I'm sorry, of resident and non-resident students needed more clarification in being able to deny admission for those students from other schools with irregular behavior the superintendent would see as a threat to safety and well-being of the students and staff in the district. Board policy reference zero, one, three, one dot one bylaw, bylaws and policies. The recommended action tonight is that the Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education votes to approve the Benton Harbor Area Schools updated Neola policy five, one, one, one as presented.
Thank you for our consideration tonight. We have staff report number eight. I'll entertain a motion at this time. We have a motion and I need a support.
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any questions or comments on the updated Neola policy?
Just to state a matter of question. So we have, we have made sure we verify that this is lawful because I know that based on the policy at the bottom of Michigan compiled law seems to be everything is legit with state law, the Emancipation of Minors Act, public law, et cetera. Because this is just a Neola policy that's already in another district.
In other districts, okay.
And I want to just state that so others can understand that, that this is not made up.
So this is a standard policy statement, correct? Any other comments on the old policy update? If not, madam secretary, please call the room.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gass?
Yes.
Ms. Gully?
Yes.
Momini, yes. Ms. Gully?
Yes.
And Ms. Seetz?
Yes. Thank you, madam secretary. Motion carries. Next item under board business is resolution. Trustee Gass?
Whereas this board of education is party to a separation agreement with its former superintendent, Dr. Shelley Walker. And whereas Elliot Uslak has served as the football coach for Benton Harbor Area Schools since 2015. And whereas this board of education is informed that Elliot Uslak has made several false allegations against school board members and district employees to the media and the general public. And whereas Dr. Shelley Walker has made statements in support of Elliot Uslak and has provided inaccurate information to the media and the general public. And whereas this board of education maintains that the faults and inaccurate statements made by Elliot Uslak and Dr. Shelley Walker have caused irreparable harm to individual board members and school employees. Now therefore be it resolved that this board of education authorizes its attorneys through a law firm, PC, to pursue and file legal action on behalf of this board of education against Elliot Uslak and Dr. Shelley Walker. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution, be and the same, are hereby rescinded.
Thank you, trustee Gass. We do have a resolution that is read before us for our consideration. I will entertain a motion for acceptance of the resolution.
Go move.
I have a motion to, of support. I need a second, please.
Support.
I have a motion of support and a second. Any questions or comments on the resolution read before us approving filing of legal action? If none, madam secretary, please call the room.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gass?
Yes.
Mrs. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Momini?
Yes.
Ms. Gully?
Yes.
Ms. Seetz?
Yes.
And Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam secretary, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the collaboration partnership agreement. Ms. Momini, give your eight.
I've mentioned this multiple times. Here's a little snippet here that explains what we need to do as part of the partnership agreement. Okay, this is one of the requirements we need to get done. And we need to create, submit to the signatories the partnership agreement for feedback and then a detailed set of procedural documents outlining the roles, responsibilities of school board members, district leadership, the partnership agreement partners related to counter business of a school district. We are overdue on this. There is an example, you take time to go to the Levonian Public Schools. Their board of education does have operating procedures. And I know we received a copy that someone did, an adjusted copy. I, right now, can't find it, but I couldn't find my nose.
I will resend it to you. And the state, all they ask for is to attribute the fact that it came from another district.
Okay.
So that there is no question where the authorization came from.
So then this board needs to look through this document and find out whether it is to their liking. And is this what we want to use? Do we want to vote on it? Now, we offered meetings on June 21st or June 26th to take care of this. And I understand there was only one person who has responded to that. We need to get it done. The fastest way to do it is to make sure everyone reads this before they come. And then we need people to show up. And I mean, I mean the entire party to show up. This is not fair to this work, I just one or two people.
Can we take a vote on those two dates?
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Since when are we here?
All right, let's see what dates.
You said the 21st or 26th?
Yeah, like one's a Thursday and one's a Tuesday. The 21st is a Thursday. And the 26th is the following Tuesday. And you want six o'clock or 6:30 so that Ms. Gully will have an opportunity to come by any later.
6:30.
6:30. Okay. So I, you know, straw poll here. Either for me? Either, okay.
Either for me?
Either, okay.
Same with me.
The 21st is a Thursday and the 26th is a Tuesday. Mr. Mitchell, do you have a preference?
I don't.
And I know, Ms. McGowan, you already responded. So.
If you have Ms. West set and just submit a name to the.
Yeah, submit a date.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So if you go to Levonian Public Schools, or if you prefer, we might have a copy of this for you to read. So if we got things we want to change, let's get in there and let's get out of there.
So you said we go to Levonian Public Schools?
Yes, and they have operating procedures.
Under their board. I just looked at it on their website. It's under the board section.
Yeah, the board section, yeah.
Their policies and operating procedure.
We do have it in Word document for Benton Harbor Area Schools. Ms. Momini, just after the moves.
I don't know what she just, what she just say about me. You're not supposed to pick on sick people.
So I'll resend it.
Okay.
In the Word document, the Benton Harbor Area Schools wanted for the review. And I believe that petition, they had a copy of it also. I thought it had been submitted.
I appreciate that because I tried to find it, the brain didn't function well enough to find it. Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you, trustee Momini. Next item on the agenda is president's comments and statement. I do believe that all of the board has some items beside you that we all, I don't know, we had an opportunity that there is a thicker copy. And if you would look at this, it may be in the next week, so we can come back and have a conversation. It is, I believe, from the athletic director with petitions to try to come back to the athletic department. So you all will look over this for consideration. And it's been signed by some students and staff. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It is a petition for Mr. Cruzio to rescind his resignation. And I have no other comment. Superintendent.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody that yesterday was our students' last day in school. And then today is the teacher's official last day for dental. So their summer actually begins at the end of the day today. So they are working, some of them will probably still have to kind of get their loans together. But this week, the last Thursday, then summer begins.
Thank you, superintendent. Comments from board members? I will start with trustee Mitchell. Thank you, trustee Taylor.
I'm just so happy it's so, it's a really fast meeting.
I think you told me to do that earlier, right?
Thank you so much.
Why is just you in his way?
It's just you.
Trustee, I believe.
I have one quick comment, and I apologize for asking extra questions tonight. Ms. Robinson and Mr. Lindsey, as you're putting together budgets, and I know you're working on transportation. Something I've discussed briefly with Ms. Robinson is regarding the Boys and Girls Club, which I was reminded of again with the young man sitting here. He was a Benton Harbor student and was the student of the year locally and nationally. It's a wonderful program. It's a wonderful program. And for those of you in the audience who don't know, they are also a partner. And it would be really, really wonderful if we could look at getting a bus route to the Boys and Girls Club for the ACA after school.
Thank you, trustee Gass, trustee McGowan, trustee Momini.
Question, are the teachers packed or are they working a couple more days this week to get packed? Are they ready for the move?
The ones who are moving, they do have, leave a day, I think two days to finish up packing.
So if somebody wants to help out some more teacher that's stuck packing, they're welcome to go help them?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I can't remember it. So fair warning, until I get better, don't ask me any questions. Because I may not have a good answer. Thank you.
Trustee McGowan. Thank you. A board and none other, any under other, yes, trustee Taylor.
So one and other, I wanted to bring to the board that the Benton Harbor Sunrise Rotary, we want to create an interact club here at the high school. And so since I'm the newly appointed president of that club, I want to make sure that we give our students a chance to create leadership and service above self so that they can serve their community that they live in. And they only need 15 members. We already have two Rotary members from Felicia, which is our, yeah, our athletic manager, as well as our construction teacher, Mrs. Jackson. And so we have two people that can help advise that. So I just want to make the board aware, and we don't want to pop anything on you. We want to make sure that we help provide a great club for the students.
Thank you, trustee Taylor, trustee Gass.
One last question. And I know that this is certainly not final because we're at the end of the year and there are teachers who are residing. Could you give us a little hint about how well we're doing at getting certified teachers in the positions for next year?
The only update I have is what Mrs. Gaff just presented last week. I know, I just met with special education. I know, I just met with a special education early childhood teacher today, she is from the East Coast, she's really excited. Well, so.
Well, Superintendent Robinson was finding that, I just wanted to update the boards when I hear the memo. We have a meeting at eight-thirty Friday morning with the folks from First Duke, so we're going to be in the discussion. So, starting Friday morning.
So, this is last week from Mrs. Baptist, so we were, at that time, we were still looking for a principal for, for DEC, a GSRP paraprofessional, and then kindergarten teacher still. At Hall, we were looking for an academic interventionist, special education paraprofessional, and then a PE teacher. MLK, academic interventionist, music teacher, ACA, we still need a math teacher there, an academic interventionist, a scamps teacher. The high school, we are still looking for a principal, a science teacher, and I did meet with last Friday, a science teacher who is slated to teach biology, so that's down for one, so we do have one of those positions here. A math teacher, and an ELA teacher, PE teacher, we just have that PE teacher there, so that's down that, so we can take it off the list, and then academic interventionist, there's two positions there. For our special education teachers, multiple openings, I do know we, I just met with one today, instructional coach, three openings, and then the athletic director's position is still open, and then the special education supervisor's position is still open.
Thank you. So, we have, we have had some positions added in a very short time, and I'm assuming we're ahead of last year, perhaps?
It's just hard to say. Okay, so we think it might be ahead, and then when August comes, we do have a lot of changes happening.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Any other board members under other? Board announcements and reminders, Ms. Mom.
Next time you not ask me any questions, is that fourteen, we have a meeting, right?
Yes.
At six-thirty?
Yeah, but we do have a meeting at six-thirty. I'm asking all board members to please be in attendance, a meeting will be with the Department of Education and the Department of Treasury. So, we will be meeting at the administration building, and I believe six-thirty.
Yeah, I think so.
We have set that meeting for. Any other board announcements or reminders? At this time, we would ask for a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Have a motion, I need a support. Have, have a motion and a support. Madam Secretary, please call the room.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gass, yes. Ms. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Momini, yes. Ms. Gully?
Yes.
And Ms. Seats?
Yes, motion carries, adjournment at six-fifty thirteen, thank you.